Okay, welcome everyone. Today is Monday, November 2, 2021. This is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park's planning board. And Chairwoman Kurzak, please take it away.
This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken at the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on eastern and west sides of the council chambers as well as the back of the building. I will ask everyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly silence your device for the duration of this meeting. And this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your future viewing pleasure. Please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton?
Here.
Michael Manzella?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jennifer Sauter is absent. Alexis Taylor is absent. Eric Gallico?
Here.
Rick Lambert?
Here.
And Barbara Krzysztof.
Here.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, the first item on the agenda, the approval of minutes of the November 1st, 2021 regular meeting. Do any of the members of the planning board have any comments that they would like to add to the minutes? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Avon Clayton and a second by Jim Henry. And everyone except Rick Lambert is eligible to vote. All other members say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Irina, I think I have to stay in too.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought you were here.
I was not.
Okay. So minor changes to the minutes as well?
Sorry.
Also as an absent member. Everyone other than Michael Manzella and Rick Lambert?
And Jim Henry.
Jim Henry is refused from one, from just?
Yeah, November 1st. Oh, yeah, one aspect of it.
Yes.
Yes.
But I believe he can vote on the minutes, correct?
Yes. All right, Jack?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Jim Henry was refused from one of the discussion items, but he can vote on the minutes.
Yeah, she participated in the rest of the discussion.
Okay, all right. So everyone other than Michael Manzella and Rick Lambert?
Sorry.
Please say aye if you agree.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. Minutes of November 1st, 2021 approved.
Okay, we have a resolution for Asbury Partners, 1500 Ocean Avenue. I know that this was a lengthy one, and I know that a lot of people put in a lot of input on this, and thank you, Jack, for pulling it all together along with, I know it takes a village. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about this resolution? If no one has any questions or concerns about the resolution, then can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Eligible members are yourself, Rick Lambert, Michael Manzella, Jennifer, and Alexis aren't here this evening.
I'm not eligible. I wasn't here for this.
You didn't vote on Beach Club?
I wasn't here for the reconsideration meeting.
No, this is not the reconsideration.
Okay.
That wasn't a reconsideration. That was a motion claiming new evidence.
Okay, okay, okay.
Asking us to alter our procedures. This says nothing. This is the original approval.
Okay, great.
So, and it's a memorialization, so I just need a majority of the members in attendance who voted in favor.
Great.
Of which you were one.
Yes.
So it would be Rick Lambert, you, and Barbara are the eligible members.
Great.
They have a motion.
Move to memorialize.
Okay, got that?
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Barbara Krzysztof. And I'm just gonna take roles just to make sure.
Yes, please. Yeah, I want it on the record.
Thank you. Mayor John Moore?
No, you don't. He's refused. The only eligible members?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Only three.
Are Rick Lambert, Michael Manzella, and Barbara Krzysztof.
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzysztof.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution memorialized.
No problem. We're good. Yes. And I should mention that both Doug, Jason, and Jennifer were very helpful.
Yes, like I said, it does take a village sometimes.
Yep, I get that.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right. Next item was a resolution for 3 Sunset Drive. Oh, for 3 Sunset Drive LLC, 1207 Pine Street.
Yes.
Resolution?
The eligible members are Michael Manzella, Alexis Taylor, who's not here, Rick Lambert, Barbara Krzysztof, John Moore, Avon Clayton, Jim Henry, Eric Gallico, and Jen Sauter, who's not here.
So I believe everyone here except for Rick Lambert is eligible.
Rick Lambert, I have him on the list that he was here on October 18th.
On what?
On October 18th.
Pine Street?
No?
No, that was the one that I corrected.
Oh, okay, so he's out. Okay. Thank you.
And I made a correction to the resolution.
I appreciate that.
And removed Rick Lambert from the members. All right, so I'm just gonna take roles just for that.
Well, we need a motion.
Good motion to approve the resolution for 1207 Pine Street?
Move it. Mike?
I have a motion by Michael Manzella and a second by Jim Henry. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
Councilwoman Avon Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Eric Gallico?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzysztof.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Resolution for 1207 Pine, adopted.
All right, I'd like to take this moment just to request that if we just move up, just switch the applications, because the application for David B. Duncan on 1317-1319 Springwood Avenue has been requested to be carried from, it was carried from 10-4. The request has been to carry it to 12-6 without notice. Can I get a motion to approve carrying without notice to December 6?
Sound new.
Second.
And I'm sorry, before I take role, Jack, you received a letter requesting?
Yes. I was gonna mention that after the vote, but since you mentioned it, we do have a letter in the file that Mr. Kennedy extended the time within which we have to vote on this matter from the MLU.
Okay, and I have a motion by Eric Gallico and a second by Michael Manzella.
Me, yeah.
Thank you. Mayor John Moore?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Avon Clayton?
Yes.
Michael Manzella?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Eric Gallico?
Yes.
Rick Lambert?
Yes.
And Barbara Krzysztof.
Yes.
Okay, application carried to December 6, 2021 without further notice.
Okay, we have our next application that's up, Interfaith Neighbors, 302 Atkins Avenue.
Yeah, I'll clean up the procedures while you're in there. Okay, eligible members from the October 4th meeting are John Moore, Barbara Krzysztof, Avon Clayton, Alexis, she's not here, and Michael Manzella. So that would have to be four, but it's my understanding that Mr. Henry and Mr. Lambert have reviewed the official transcript of the October 4th, 2021 meeting for this matter.
I watched the AP TV.
Yes, that's the official transcript, okay. And you, so you're eligible to participate and vote. I will prep a certification for each of you, email it to you for your signature, your submission to the secretary. So our eligible members now include everyone that's here in attendance except for Eric. Didn't you refuse yourself on this?
David Duncan?
No.
No, that was the David Duncan.
That's fine. So then Eric's good to go, so we have eight people. Great.
All right.
Seven people. I'm sorry.
Okay, why don't we swear in your witness, and then we'll swear in the board's witnesses so that we can get to the issues that were raised at the last meeting and see if we can hustle this.
Sounds good, thank you.
Well, we have Paul, he's heard already, he's sworn a testimony about this matter. You true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Will you state your name for the record and spell it?
Paul McCavoy, M-C-E-V as in Victor, I-L-Y.
And Jason and Michael, will you raise your right hands? Swear a testimony about this matter, the truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Will you state your names for the record, spell them, and give us your affiliation with the board?
Michael Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N. Clark, hint for plan.
Jason Fisher, F-I-C-H-E-R. Inside N-N.
Go ahead, Eric. Thank you. George?
Just for the record, I'm Kevin Bransley, and I'm covering for Hunt Perry tonight. My law firm is Siciliano and Bransley LLC in Long Branch, New Jersey.
How do you spell your last name, Kevin?
It's B as in boy, R-A-N as in November, S-L-E-Y.
Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, why don't you take it away? I know there was some issues you wanted to address from the last meeting.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again for having us here this evening, continuation of the earlier hearing on October 4th. Just a brief overview of the application. The application concerns 302 Atkins Avenue. It's an early childhood learning center to be owned and operated by Interfaith Neighbors. Its design and its intent is to operate for the benefit of three-month-year-old infants to three-year-old toddlers. Expected enrollments by year three, the full enrollment is expected to be 24 infants and toddlers. Design previously submitted to you has been submitted to the state and reviewed by the state. Facility as designed meets or exceeds all state standards with respective facilities of this kind. Acquired the property at 302 Atkins Avenue earlier this year. It formerly housed the Bridges Educational Learning Center. Bridges was closed in June of 2019. The advertised capacity of Bridges was 42 children. By the way, based on a review of aerial photos of the then-configured site, Bridges had a slightly smaller footprint, a two-and-a-half-story configuration, a double driveway off the alley with no marked parking spaces handicapped or otherwise, and no onsite pickup or drop-off zone. Since our meeting on October 4th, the Bridges facility has been demolished and the site has been cleared. Our professionals have made the agreed-upon revisions to the plans based on the discussion at the October 4th hearing. Steve Carlich and Peter Avakian are here this evening to address any, to address completely any of the issues that were raised at the last meeting and any new ones that may come up this evening. We also had with us this evening our educational consultant, Dr. Eno, who has submitted staffing analysis to the planning board at the request of the mayor. Dr. Eno is available to answer any questions that you may have with respect to that staffing analysis. We continue to do outreach within the community to let families and residents of the community know about the project and our intent to operate the Early Childhood Learning Center at 302 Atkins Avenue. Our current timeline calls for the award of a construction contract early in 2022, with construction completed, a CO issued, and infants and toddlers enjoying this proposed state-of-the-art facility by late next year. We're hopeful that after tonight's presentation and discussion, and after any additional questions that the board may have regarding this application, that you all will agree that the proposed Early Childhood Learning Center constitutes a terrific new asset for this community, and that a vote approving the plan tonight will take place. So thank you very much, and we can turn it over to the professionals unless you have questions for me.
Nope.
Thank you. Any member of the public?
Any questions?
Based on his testimony?
Nobody from the public?
Thank you. Paul? Sir, please raise your right hand. Swear a testimony about this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Will you state your name again for the record? Tell us what you're doing for us.
Steven Carlich, Shorepoint Architecture, Ocean Grove, New Jersey. That's C-A-R-L-I-P-G-E.
You were previously qualified, so you can take it in.
Okay. In the interest of brevity, I'm just gonna address the planner's letter. If there are any other questions at the end that remain, we can certainly address those as well.
Planner's revised letter?
The second, yes, the second.
Okay, so let's, Irina? Can we mark Michael's report from CCH dated October 1, 2021, updated November 11, 2021 as Board E1?
We are on, I'm sorry, one second. We are on B3.
Okay, then make it B3. And since Steven's gonna work on that, we should have it in record. Thank you.
Okay, the first, the first issue that was raised was the question of off-street parking. That's paragraph 2.3. Again, the planner's provided tonight provides for, the requirement for parking is five spaces plus one space per employee off-street. The planner's provided provides six spaces. We believe that the six spaces being provided is adequate for the facility in that there is considerable off-street parking available in this area. The other reason is we have filled every square foot of the site with either parking, wherever we could squeeze it in, and/or outdoor play area for, in order to meet the state standards of 35 square foot per child. So we literally have taken every square foot of the site and utilized it in one form or another. We believe, and you'll hear more from the engineer, that the parking is adequate with the six spaces provided plus the two drop-off spaces.
Steven, did you say there's adequate off-street parking in the area? Did you meant to say on-street parking?
I meant on-street. We have?
It's fine. No, you said off.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
Off-street parking.
Off-site here. Off-site.
Off-site parking. On-street, off-site.
There's, there's considerable parking available on Atkins Avenue and on the side
street Jefferson, adjacent to the site and in very close proximity to the site. I've been there many times. There's never been any issue parking there. I was there when the childcare center was operational. I never saw any parking issues, and they have fewer parking spaces than we're providing now. Again, we provided a staffing analysis. We believe the parking is adequate, and we, again, we filled every square foot of this site that we could fill with either parking or required play area.
All right, can we, since we're on it, we may as well just put this to bed. So can we just get an understanding again? I know that we did a staffing plan. So how many, how many, how many staff people are going to be in this location? So that I understand how many staff people we're talking about and how many spaces we have?
There will be five staff people, and there are six off-street parking spaces, plus a number of on-street adjacent parking spaces that could be used.
So we feel that there are going to be a total of five staff people in this building at any given time?
Correct. And I believe the staffing analysis that was submitted reflects that.
I just wanna make sure we're clear and get it on the record as to what, and this is based on the New Jersey requirements.
Correct. And Dr. Eno can address those requirements if you, if you're so inclined.
I'm not yet. I'm just, I'm not questioning the requirement, but I'm just wanna make sure that we're clear. That we're saying that there are no more than five people that are going to be staffed at any given time, and then the rest is two for pickup. Two spaces are for pickup, and there are six regular spaces that somebody, that people could use.
Correct.
All right. Okay. All right.
Drop-off and pickup.
Yes, drop-off, pickup, two for that, and you have six additional spaces, of which you feel that five people will always be in the building, so there's one extra in theory.
In theory, yes.
Okay.
I thought it was six people in the building, and my, my memory is bad.
That's why, that's why we wanted this clarity.
If I could jump in, that was the testimony last time, but they hadn't done the staffing yet. So now that they've done the staffing and they've calibrated it, it's fine.
Okay, so the last meeting, it was a, the, I'm gonna say principal, wrong term, the nurse, a secretary, and three people that handled the children. I thought the last meeting, it was 36 children, that was 24?
No, 36.
I thought Paul said 24.
Can I add here?
Yeah, it's only 24 children. It's not 36, according to this.
That analysis, we expect there is a full enrollment by year three, which would be 24 children, and the state requirement at that point would be five in the facility.
Right.
John, there is a nurses' facility in the building, but we will not have a full-time nurse.
Right, and that, and actually, that's a change, because we discussed there were 30-plus children last time. Now we're down to 24, so then, so now the numbers are within?
No problem.
What sounds?
I was just like, I thought I was like, I went down 36.
No, you did. You did, and you were absolutely right, because there were 13, 13, and 13 for the amount of children. I'm sorry, 12, 12, 12. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Go ahead.
Steve, would it be accurate to say that there is 10 required if it's five plus one per employee, and five employees, 10 parking spaces required? Six provided? Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. Plus the off-site.
Plus the off-site.
Yep. Okay. Good, thank you.
10 required? Tell me about that.
Well, his testimony was five spaces are required plus one per staff, so.
Oh, five plus one. Okay, so we're, okay.
So we're four short, but the testimony about on-street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the two drop-offs could be argued as well.
Well, they're not, it's, the intention is not to have somebody park there permanently. We wanna keep those spaces available for pickup and drop-off.
It'll accommodate two vehicles.
Two vehicles, yes.
Okay. All right, so that's worth considering. Thank you.
Okay, the next two paragraphs address parking lot plantings, which I'm gonna let the engineer address. Those are parking issues. However, paragraph 2.6C addresses on-building lighting, and there's a question as to whether the on, the building-mounted wall, wall-mounted lighting will be uplight and/or downlight. And the answer, for the record, is all of the building-mounted fixtures will be downlight fixtures, just to clarify. The next paragraph relates to the fencing and gates.
Just before, we also had a question about the color temperature of lights.
We're amenable to 3,000 degrees Kelvin if that's what you prefer. That's fine.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Again, that's an engineering issue more than, but I'm, I have no problem with 3,000 degrees Kelvin. The next paragraph is 2.8 fencing, and there's a question about the gate and the fence need to match, and I agree. The gate detail will be revised to match the fence style exactly. It'll be a little less ornate than the current gate detail, but it'll match the fence. The next item that noted in the report is paragraph 2.9, which is signage, and there's a question there about, will the signage be illuminated? And again, my position is there'll be pin-mounted, non-illuminated signs. When you see the rendering, we've changed the rendering so that it shows that they're pin-mounted letters, even though the exact letters are not yet. No, we'll get to that in a moment. 2.10 deals with mechanical equipment. There was a question raised, and I thought we had addressed it at the last meeting, about whether or not big mechanical equipment would be adequately screened from view, being that the building has a two-foot parapet. You sit off to our mechanical engineer, and all of the, the mechanical equipment on the roof will be in the 2.5 to 3-ton range, which means that they can be delivered in a, in a box that's no more than 30 inches high. And if that box sits on an eight-inch perm, which is what it'll sit on so that it can be flashed properly, you'd have to be in excess of over 200 feet away to see the top of the box based on the cutoff angle of the two-foot parapet. So we believe that the two-foot parapet does provide adequate screening of the rooftop mechanical equipment. Paragraph 3 then gets into building design. Here again, there's some discrepancy as to, I think I'm gonna apply for a copyright for a new style of architecture called whimsical brutalism, because the letter says that the architecture is both brutal and whimsical, which I find pretty absurd.
Just to be fair, that's a whole, that was meant to come out of there.
Okay.
That was not intended to carry forward.
Now that we moved from whimsical brutalism back to whimsical range, we believe that we have a design that's appropriate for young children, which was the intent all along, and I'm gonna, when we get to the end here, I'm gonna show you a rendering. 3.1, also had a question about are there ample windows? The answer, we believe, is yes. One of the reasons that there are, there are certain areas of the facade where there are no windows is that both of the egress stairs occur on the exterior of the building. The activity rooms are all provided with adequate punched window openings, and the nurses' station and the other occupied rooms are all provided with appropriate penetration. There are two sections of the building that, where there is very limited penetration, and that's simply because those are fire-rated egress stairs. The next item, we have made some changes to the design, so let's pull the rendering up, and I understand that we don't have this electronically, so we'll just look at it here. At the request of some of the comments we heard at the last meeting, we have now made a few changes. One thing you'll notice is that all of the window mullions will now be a brilliant blue to pop, so that they pop. That'll help pop out the, the main entrance and all of the other penetration on the building. The other thing is we've even added color to the scuffers. We want the building to look like it's an assemblage of Lego blocks sitting on a base, a solid base. That's the whole idea. We want the kids to think this is just an assemblage. It was put together with Legos. We think we have an appropriate solution here, so we've re-rendered the front elevation so you can see the color of the aluminum framing and all of the, the color that'll be on the building. We've also changed the letters so that you can see there'll be pin-mounted letters, and again, we expect to name the building after a donor, so eventually those letters will reflect the name of the building once that donor is announced.
Excuse me. Irina, B, A?
We are A4.
Okay, make it A4.
And this will be rendering, we'll say, the minute 11:15:21.
Accurate, Steven? A revised rendering?
Revised front elevation rendering.
Front elevation.
We haven't rendered all four sides, but obviously the colors will be consistent on all four sides.
Cool. Okay, we're good.
The next item in the, in the report is paragraph 3.2, the play area. Under 3.2A, there was a suggestion that we consider using some type of a permeable surface for the play area, and I can announce tonight that we will be using a permeable rubber pavement, either a rubberway permeable paving system or the equivalent, but it will be a permeable system for pavement on the play area. With some suggestion about using turf, we really don't wanna use turf. The reason we don't want turf is that these are infants and toddlers, and what they'll be doing is either pulling or riding in wagons and/or riding tricycles, so they're on wheels, and we want them to have a play surface where they can actually wheel around, as opposed to being on a grass-type surface. There was a question also about the shade structure, and we are moving, just to be clear, we are moving the shade structure to the extreme northeast corner of the play area. The shade structure itself, I actually have a drawing that shows where it is, which I could provide to the planner, just so that the, the three poles of the shade structure are on the perimeter of the play area. Those poles will be 10 feet high, the fabric will be a blue fabric, and we will provide be a blue fabric, and we will provide safety padding on the three poles where they come down into the play area. And it's a simple triangular sail, one simple form, just to provide a small area of shade on the outdoor play area. There's some questions about the drop-off function and parking and potential conflicts, I'm gonna leave that to the engineer. There's a question about relocation of the accessible parking space, we have not relocated it. The reason we have not relocated is if we move it to the spaces that are on the opposite side of the parking area, just north of the building, we would actually lose a space, because the space and then the breakout area from the parking space, in order to meet the ADA requirements, would require that those two spaces become one. We don't have room to do it there, so we prefer to keep it right where it is. We think that's, it is the closest space to the front entry. Admittedly, you will have to cross a crosswalk and then immediately up the ramp into the front entrance, but we do believe it's the most efficient location. We will, one, one other thing, 3.5, we will be adding a bicycle rack on the front corner of the building, actually right here on the right, right at the bottom corner, on the corner of Atkins and Jefferson, in accordance with the planner's request, we'll use a single-loop bicycle rack. Again, we don't expect that a lot of people will be riding bikes, and we don't want to encourage teenagers to hang here, but in light of the fact that even a staff member might opt to ride their bike here, we will have a bicycle rack. And then beyond that, everything else gets into affordable housing, which is outside of my purview, so I'll leave that, and I believe the engineer can address the rest of the engineering issues. Be happy to take any questions.
First of all, I mean, I would really like to thank you for taking into account a lot of the suggestions that were made here, and like the shade area, the permeable surface, the bike rack, the providing us with a staffing plan was, was all very helpful, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay, can we, any comments from, actually, no, no comments.
No, mine's in public.
Yes, we have to see if there are any questions from the members of the public. No questions from the members of the public? Okay.
Thank you.
Next.
She doesn't, she can put them all up.
Here.
Mark, do the site plan.
Site plan, sure.
Perfect.
Peter, please raise your right hand, I want to hear your testimony about giving us the truth, what's with the number of truths?
I do.
Will you state your name for the record?
Peter R. Avakian, A-V-A-K-I-A-N.
And you are still the engineer, licensed engineer for this project?
Yes, I am.
You know, you're the recent one in.
Thank you. I think it might be easiest if I proceed by just running through a list of items that I transcribed after the last meeting, that were comments either from board members, professionals, I don't think we had any public comments, we had some questions ourselves, after which I can discuss any of the engineering report items that are still outstanding. Let's see, I think the second sheet may be the best one, if that's okay.
These are revised plans? Are they, they're in the record yet now, or not?
No, we're gonna mark them into the record, and this is a revised, um, sorry, revised site plan, it dated 10/27/21, is that correct?
Or 10/15/21?
Is that correct?
This is the most recent.
I see, I don't know.
Is that a yes, the most recent, I'm sorry, the plan stated 10/27/21?
That's the most recent, I think.
Yes, okay, so this will be marked as A5.
Do?
Thank you. Based on our discussions of the vehicular traffic coming in to the site, comments were made about accessing from the drop-off area onto the walkway into the building. So, one of the things that we did, along with the architect, was create a concrete drop curb along the entirety of the covered walkway, that's from Atkins Avenue back to the rear corner of the building, which is the northwest corner of the building, northeast corner of the building. So that entire drop-off area will be, adjacent to that drop-off area will be a drop curb, and we have placed canopy columns with bollards in front of those canopy columns at each location, so that there's a little protection there. One of the issues with the parking is that, yes, we do provide six off-street parking spaces. What's really gonna happen, though, is that the children coming in and being dropped off, the vehicles are gonna continue off-site, no one's gonna come in and park and walk into the facility with a child, we're utilizing those parking spaces for our employee parking. So we fully anticipate the drop-off area to act as the parking and loading zone for the students coming in, and the six parking spaces, the four on the north side, and the two below the building next to the play surface, will be utilized by employees. Probably will always be one or two available, also in case the need was there, but we also indicated on-street where the parking exists today. We discussed staffing. We have had some comments about the lighting, we revised the lighting plan, that's not shown on this drawing, but we did revise the lighting plan, and the lighting has been designed by a lighting consultant, and we show rear cutoffs on the two lights that are adjacent to the athletic fields to the east. We did not show a rear cutoff on a light that is on the west side, which is on the exit driveway. We thought it would be more appropriate for that light spillage to go onto the sidewalk, but if the rear cutoff is requested there, we will provide there as well. That will be a straight cutoff and will prevent lights from going off-site. There were comments about tree wells recommended along the Jefferson Avenue frontage, and our discussion at the last meeting was, we have a curb and sidewalk that is basically monolithic in that area, your curved sidewalk has no grass plot in between, so there are no available spaces along the sidewalk within the right-of-way for a tree well, and the request was made, if the tree well could be placed in the rubberized play surface. Mr. Carlich reviewed that, and in fact, we can't reduce the square foot area of that play surface because it is required by statute, so we respectfully request that we don't provide them here. We would love it as well, we'd love to have some kind of a breakup of the visual there, you'll have a fence, but there's no room for the tree well to go in that area.
So just to be, just to be clear, the shade structure doesn't diminish the area that you need, that's correct?
Absolutely not, that's correct.
Only the tree wood.
That's correct. And the shade structure that we have on our site plan will be relocated slightly in accordance with the architect's testimony. We did note the screening of the rooftop mechanical equipment that Mr. Carlich referenced. I don't know if he really got into the meter locations, but the architectural detail to recess and enclose the meters was provided on the architectural plan. I think that's personally, just so you know, I think that's a great comment by the board and by the professionals. Frequently you see something like that, and you don't realize the impact until you walk by the building after it's built and occupied and the utilities go in, and you go, wow, what's that doing there? And so this provides a nice aesthetic look to that frontage. Number of employees and parking objects confirmed. The one comment that Mr. Carlich can talk about, the lighting under the side canopy, which I'll call the covered entry canopy, has been provided, and on our lighting plan we did identify those light fixtures, and that the light will not, will not go much beyond, except the average illumination beyond the covered entry. We provided a bike rack detail at the corner of Jefferson and Atkins, that detail will be changed slightly to the recommendation of the planner, and we'll bring that bike rack down onto the applicant's property, so it will be in the public right of way. A single, I think a single loop is what we're proposing, so that revision will be made to the drawing. A question was raised, and a good one, about landscaping located within the right-of-way. We've had to remove the landscaping on the north side adjacent to the alleyway. The reason that was removed, so we could push that curb as far to the north as practical, and we moved, actually we moved the building six inches closer and right on the property line along Jefferson Avenue, and the reason we did that is because we did not want to ask for variance for the driveway aisle width. So we basically pulled the property out, we pulled the building south, we pulled the parking lot a little north, we lost the plantings there, but we provide a 23-foot-wide driveway It is a bit of a compromise, the only other opportunity for plantings would be within the right-of-way, and we would probably rather not do that, but one plan that is in the right-of-way still, I believe, are the street trees along, along Atkins Avenue. So a request will be made, as indicated in both reports, for permission to place two street trees, and the light standard is located just west of the property line, so the light standard is literally along the right-of-way line of Atkins Avenue. I don't think there's any option there, unless we pushed it into the parking space, which we would rather not do. The other comments I had were the colored framing of the building windows and doors, which Mr. Carlich testified to, and we do, based on the engineering comment, which actually was a very good one, because we have a flat grade of the property as it comes through the driveway drop-off area, so we placed a concrete driveway apron from curb to curb along Atkins Avenue. So that driveway apron will be along the edge of the curb line, back to the easterly edge of the sidewalk, that will all be a concrete driveway, you can better control the grade there, you'll get the flow out into the gutter line. As we testified last time, all of the rooftop drainage is proposed to be tied into a drywell, which will have a overflow connection into drainage inlet. One of the things we were not able to do because of timing were soil borings, and we respectfully request that that be made a condition of approval, and will be done before issuance of a building permit or done in time for the engineer to review the percolation rates and the soil characteristics of the design of that small drainage facility. Just to show you the size of it, it's really not much water. The existing impervious coverage on the site is about 3,300 square feet, the site's 8,800 square feet, so it's about 35%. It's gonna bump up to about 5,700 square feet, which is somewhere around 60%, but that's, that's small in terms of quantity of runoff. The drywell proposed is extremely oversized to accommodate that, and will verify soil characteristics, so we don't have a problem down the road. Other than that, we are absolutely willing to comply with any other comments or conditions in the engineer's report, such as providing additional grades, contours, test fit locations as necessary to comply with their. Last letter, which Jason, is the letter of November 10th, 2021, I believe. So again, Mount Chair, we tried to do the best we could to comply with the comments made by the planning board and by your experts, and hopefully we've done a good job. It's a nice site, it'll be a tremendous improvement, it really will be, we appreciate your willingness to, thank you.
Does anybody, anybody in the planning board have any questions that they'd like to bring forward?
I have a question, Barbara.
Go ahead.
Um, there was a remark made in Mr. Carlich's testimony about the parking space, the ADA space, would you actually lose a space if you moved it? Because wouldn't you gain that access aisle next to the, where the space is now, or no?
What you need to do with the handicap spaces, provide an adjacent area where you have, you call it a drop-off area, which is crosshatched here.
Right.
So if that were relocated, we would lose one space.
Right, but wouldn't you gain the space where it exists, or no, I guess it doesn't fit?
No, we would end up having five spaces instead of six, unfortunately.
Okay.
Because there would only be one.
But currently, where it's shown on the plan, is that an access aisle next to it, or?
I think the problem is the width of these.
Okay.
Spaces wouldn't allow.
Wouldn't allow.
Two, where the, where the.
I got you.
Yeah, that's why.
If you converted those to two, they're each eight feet, you have nine feet.
Yes.
So it's eight foot, space is eight foot high.
I got you.
That's really how tight everything is, it's a.
Yeah.
Great site, but it's a small site, and I think the best testimony, you've probably heard tonight, in my mind, was from Paul, because with the number of students they anticipate here, it kind of brings the whole scale, it's what you try to do with the developer, it brings the whole scale of the project down, and it's much more manageable, you'll have fewer cars coming in, and you'll have probably fewer employees.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, planning board members have any other questions?
Just a question for Jason, too, the overflow, that was good on your end, I know there was some testimony about it, the drywell through the curb.
Well, the drywell hasn't been designed, they haven't given us soil.
Okay.
We don't have any data information, but he testified that they'll provide that to us.
Okay.
And if, if the calculations and the backup data support it, the way it's shown on plan and concept is totally.
Okay.
There is one point I wanted to make about that, though, I don't know that it's up yet, the pipe that runs along Atkins on the top there is in the right-of-way, can that be moved onto the site?
I see that, yes, it can be.
Okay.
Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, so it's, in concept, it's good, we'll take a look at the calculations.
We know the soil characteristics of the site.
Yeah.
We just haven't been able to get someone else to do a full soil boring, where we'll be able to determine percolation rates and soil types and efficiency of this unit, but what we will do is, the drainage inlet is so close to the drywell, we would like to make a connection to that for any overflow, just in case the unit gets surcharged, probably.
I was writing something, I missed what's gonna happen, what are you gonna, what are you gonna do?
We're gonna bring the drainage pipe along Atkins Avenue fully onto the property, so there are no infrastructure improvements within the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the planning board members? Any questions from the professionals?
Please, just a few quick follow-ups. With respect to the, the street trees?
Yes.
Is that an issue changing the species so that we have a higher branch?
Absolutely not.
Okay, good. In terms of the lighting, the characteristics, I think, I think we may have missed them, I think you do have a little schedule on there for lighting?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
So I just want to make sure that I understand it. We thought it was actually part of the, of the light specification.
Okay, no.
Because it wasn't in a standard.
It's a schedule, and it provides a minimum, so.
So I want to review the numbers, if you just understand what they are, and so it's on the record. The, the minimum five-foot candles that's required is met, the average is not indicated. The max to, maximum to minimum of foot candle ratio is 12.25?
Yes.
Is that correct? And the maximum to average is 4.22?
Yes.
So at some point, you did cap that to average. These are, I just want to let the board know, these are slightly above, very slightly above what the maximum requirements are for the uniformity, but overall, it's a very uniform and relatively dimly lit parking lot, so I think it's, even though they don't fully comply, I think it's, it's successful, and they do have some spillage that they talked about, but that's a function of the, of the proximity to parking lot to the property line, and it's.
And just to be sure, you would rather have a cutoff on that, I'll say the light adjacent to the exit drive, at the driveway, you'd rather have a cutoff there?
No, actually, I, I think that if, if you leave it without the cutoff, because it'll, it'll eliminate the intersection.
What we're talking about is the light right at the driveway exit onto Atkins Avenue, it's not a very heavy, heavily illuminated light.
Right.
But just a little bit of spillage may just help.
That's the highest activity point on the site.
Which you, may I just add one thing you brought up in your report, and it has to do with the crosswalk. The request was made for a crosswalk from the parking spaces across the lot, I believe, to the building, rather than utilize the driveway apron, which is essentially an extension to the sidewalk, to get into the building. We're willing to do whatever your desire is there, it would really be a crosshatched crosswalk adjacent to the driveway apron in the pavement, to direct people exiting their vehicles into the building. To be honest with you, with the exception of the early morning when the drop-off is being used heavily, they're probably gonna walk right across the parking lot. If not, you can get out of your car, go to the sidewalk, and walk to the front entrance way, but we're willing to do anything.
It was more direct route, normally, you know, we would make a suggestion and code would get involved in that, but I think that that's where they're gonna walk anyway, and it'd be better to signify there, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that's it, I think that's all.
Anything for you, Jason?
I had a number of things in my letter that were, make sure I covered, and between all the people that testified and what Michael just talked about, it hit everything I had.
You're okay?
And just so the board knows, Jason and I have worked together before, usually on the board and engineer, and he's the advocate's engineer, but we have such a good relationship, I'm more than willing to talk to him about it and accommodate any of his issues, you know, our final revised plan. He has to sign off on them, so I'll make sure they're.
Right.
The one recommendation, this doesn't, we're good at engineering, but the architecture is that the, the new renderings that are gonna be submitted should be made part of the, of the plan set, so that that, there's a benchmark for construction, so the construction office can monitor that.
Okay.
Make sure that the design follows it.
Yeah, they should, I mean, they should be anyway.
Yeah.
Right? Okay. All right, so no more questions from the planning board members or the professionals? Yeah, go ahead.
I just had one, just to help clarify for me, the, the light spillage you don't think is going to affect the neighbors in any?
I'll, I'll be very specific with that, what we've done, there are, there are two lights on the east side of the property, which are along the parking lot entryway from the alley. What we've done with those two lights is put a rear cutoff, so the light shines into the parking lot, but does not shine behind the parking lot, and that would be on the athletic field, minimal, you know, zero to 0.1, which is very, very minimal. The spillage of the light on the front goes to the municipal right-of-way, so it's the city's right-of-way of Atkins Avenue and the alleyway slightly, so we don't mind that spillage occurring there, but there are no residential properties at all that are gonna be affected by this development in its entirety.
In general, having a little bit brighter intersection of a driveway or a parking lot like that is, is safe.
All right, if we have any questions? All right, do we have any questions from the public? No questions from the public? Okay. Do we have any, any comments from the planning board members on this project?
Is that your case? Go down with your witness.
Are we done?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking, thanks for keeping me honest here. I figured we were done.
My comment is, like, this is a facility that's definitely needed, Hasbury Park is needed in many communities, so thank you for that. I thank the benefactor, we'll find out down the road who it is for supplying the money, and I thank Interfaith for providing this to Hasbury Park. I think it's a wonderful project that's deeply, deeply needed, not just in Hasbury Park, but countrywide, and so I thank you very much, it's a good project.
Public comment?
Yes, can I get a motion to open for public comment, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any public comment? All right, motion to close, public comment.
Move it.
Second.
I assume the vote on both of those?
I.
We're good.
All right. Procedure, that's what we want. Okay, do we have, you want to go through what the conditions are, Jack?
We'll remove them pretty quickly, so.
I know.
In addition to a bunch of.
We'll try to keep you honest.
Yeah, a bunch of findings and facts. One of the conditions I did note, Michael, I would comment, if you're going to plant any street trees in the right-of-way along Atkins, it would need council approval, so it would be subject for that. The species, witnesses indicated they would be happy to give whatever Michael suggests, so we'll put that in there as a condition. Soil borings to be submitted to Jason as a condition of approval, and we'll cover a whole lot of that, other engineering details with the usual compliance from Jason's reports, both dated and submitted for that. One of the conditions is maximum enrollment as represented by the applicant will be 24 enrollees, or toddlers or students, if you will, children, within three years, maximum five staff members as well within the three years. So moving the drainage pipe located on Atkins Avenue onto the subject property and out of the city roadway. And that's what I have. I will create more or make these, make them more extensive after Michael and Jason have a chance to look at my resolution.
Right.
So if you have any other.
I just have a, I guess, a general question. I don't know who would be able to answer this, or do we want to take this into account? I know that we brought down the enrollment to 24 now, as opposed to what it was. Do we want to make it a hard and fast number? Or do we want to leave it as that, because you do have the room to expand that? And that's just because I hate to, I would hate to make a resolution that says, oh, it's going to be 24, and then, but you have room for a lot more than that, and as long as you keep your staffing up to the regulations that you have to be according to New Jersey in order to get your license, do we want to give a hard pass number?
Any requests? Yeah, wait, 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 wait.
Go ahead.
Let me just, one second.
Go ahead.
The issue, the issue, as I see it, is that if the number of employees goes up, then there's relief necessary, so.
And how about enrollees?
Enrollees, it wouldn't matter.
Okay, so then I don't have to put the enrollees in, I would just put it staff-wise?
Staff, yeah.
Because that would have an effect, if we increase the staff there, that would have an effect on the parking.
I know, it would, and here's, that's what I'm concerned about, is because there are very strict rules as to ratios in New Jersey. So, in order for them to retain their license, they have to, if they can't go beyond a certain number, and then they're, and the amount of employees have to keep up with that number.
Right, and then that would trigger.
And that would trigger something. I just want to make sure that we're not boxed in somehow.
I can omit the reference to the maximum enrollees and just leave in the staffing.
The staffing, how much the staffing is.
Back to zoning and planning perspective.
I have no problem, whatever we do, but I think Paul is going to tell us maybe the enrollment was knocked down because of state regulations and the building can't hold 36, it can only hold.
Is that true?
What we're trying to do is address the needs of the community.
Yes.
We've done 175 surveys throughout the community. We're looking at demographics of the population and the number of schoolchildren over the last twelve years. We're trying to address the needs of the community. You know, we think we'll be, we think we'll serve the needs of the community with an enrollment of 24 within the first three years, reaching that at the three-year level. But we would like some flexibility, and thank you very much, Carolyn, to the extent that those needs of the community may change, the facility will be large enough to accommodate more, but at this point, we think by year three, 24 will service the needs.
That wouldn't be our concern, so to speak.
No.
Being regulated by outside agency.
But wouldn't it be our concern that if the amount of staff have to rise?
Yes.
So maybe year four, something will happen, maybe year five. So all, so no matter what we do, they will have to come back to us.
Yeah.
If either staff goes beyond or people, or children go beyond.
Yeah, well, they, it's directly staff. They increase their staff, but if they increase their enrollment and the state says you now need three more staff members.
Right.
They've still got to come back to us because going from five to eight or nine or.
I just hope that if that has to happen, that that is as painless to you as possible for us and you, because that's just, that's just crazy talk, you know? We do, I know, I understand that we have to stay within limits, but I don't want to make it difficult for such an amazing project that we're doing. And as long as we have the room for it, we should not make this difficult. But I get it for the first three years, it is what it is.
What I could do, I could put in a factual finding as to what John expressed about the need within the community and how they're fulfilling the need, and how important it is to have this facility as a fact, so that in the future, if they come back for a variance for parking, they can take that resolution and say, hey, look what the planning board said about how good we are.
Yeah.
And so we're doing, and please consider that in whether or not you grant us an additional variance on on-street parking versus on-sites.
Whatever we can do to make it easiest in the future, that would be best. Now, because I just broke some rules. What do we have to do now?
Yes.
Jack, because I broke some rules in doing that.
Do you want to include things, other things that were mentioned, like changing the fence and doing the concrete apron, like others?
I'm hoping that when I send you the resolution, you're going to tell me I have those. You should also put in about this.
They're all in your resolution.
I have it in this finding as a fact.
Yeah, because we had.
I have, I have like 17 findings of fact.
Okay.
As fast as I could with my left hand in scratch. But I think between what I submit to the board.
Yes.
And to Michael and Jason, we can adequately cover and make a re-proper form of them, have good findings, so that we can support the applicant in the future for future expansion plans, at least smooth it away, and we will certainly address that now the gate and the fence are going to match, and a number of other things. That the building lighting fixtures are now all downward, maximum on 3,000 degrees. Gate and fence, I have that pinned mounted, not illuminated sign. I was, I had like 17 findings of fact that I'll put.
Okay. All right, now that I broke some rules, do we have to go back to open public comment?
Oh, no, well, does anybody have anything to say? We opened it, but based on what Paul added? No, doesn't sound like it. And does anybody want to question Mr. Carroll about what he said? Has he testified a second time? Hear none, we're good, we're not breaking rules.
Okay. All right, then I'd like to make a motion to approve this project with the, with the items that Jack mentioned, like we always said.
Second.
I have a motion by Barbara Krizak and a second by Almond Staiton. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Almond Staiton.
Yes.
Michael Mendez.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Eric Gallo.
Yes.
Rick Lambert.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Are they unanimous? Yes, congratulations. Application of first.
Thank you very much. Great project. Motion to close, second?
Move it.
All right.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.